Okay, it's fine. I see one is. Okay, I call the meeting of the Fama Public Schools to order for April 4th, 2022. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting, but it can be viewed live on Channel 14 and a recording of this meeting can be viewed on YouTube. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising the hand icon on your screen and I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Meeting Laws. Do we have anyone who's making recording this evening? Okay, seeing none. Public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@fama.k12 MA.us. Do we have any public comment? Okay, I'm seeing, oh, sorry, I just wanted to acknowledge the letters that we got that asked that we acknowledged their their public comments since they couldn't make it tonight. From Sandy, Megan Silva. Perfect, thank you. Okay, next is to, our first is to act on Carousel of Light License for 2022. Lori.
So, this is when we voted on it last time, we had the first read and there were no edits on this, so it is as presented at first.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the Carousel of Light License for 2022? I'll make a motion to approve the Carousel of Light License for 2022. Is there a second, Kelly, a second? And it will be a roll call vote. We will begin with, or build, first of all, are there any questions or comments before we vote? Okay, great. I didn't think so, but let's just circle back to that. Beginning with Bill Dorfner.
Dorfner, yes.
Leah Palmer.
Palmer, yes.
Terry.
Terry Madures, yes.
Welch, yes.
Melissa Keef, yes.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Andrew Thurl, yes.
And Natalie Camlappus, also, yes. So, the license is approved. Next on our agenda is the second read on diversity, equity, and inclusion position. As you recall, we have the first read during the last meeting and the feedback received overall related to two main themes, to consolidate the job description and also to explore the need for and timing of an equity audit. So, thank you to everyone for the biofeedback and we'll definitely discuss more items related to that job description tonight. And Lori will speak to the job description and also information on the equity audit.
So, thank you everyone for your feedback. I was trying to incorporate what I heard from the school committee. There were three members that have gave input that I actually tried to incorporate. I appreciate all the level of collaboration. In addition, I had mentioned that I'm going to, I was going to interview students in a focus group. And I was pleased when I showed up that we had 34 students attend and very thoughtful and insightful feedback and comments. It was really good discussion. And so, I also, you'll see some changes in here that was based on the feedback of the students. In addition, I received one additional staff email that had a number of things that I also honored. In some respects, I think that it might have been the same thing, but it was worded better. There was a couple additional things that also got included because of that. So, that was the additional feedback that I incorporated. Including, does everyone have the newest definition today? But I'm adding a few things about the additional things about the equity audit, but also the student opportunity indicators. And thank you, Leah, for that. So, when I looked at the indicators that you sent along, there, I was very pleased to see that we actually incorporated in one way or another in the job description. So, that was very positive. I mean, basically, what the indicators were from the student opportunity, that was equity assessment or commission and equity audit. Ongoing professional learning and self-reflection on our own biases, but then also looking at the systemic biases in the policies and practices. Ongoing professional development with culturally responsive teaching practices. And cultural and background of students is reflected in the curriculum and instruction materials. And the last is a wide range of community groups are engaged in active particip- as active participants, ongoing efforts to build and sustain a culturally responsive district and schools. And so, I felt like that was reflective. So, thank you for that because that, I think, kind of solidified that we had captured the important things. So, that's about it. I'll take any questions or any additional feedback.
And would you like to speak to the equity audit, the research that you did on the equity audit? Sure. That was a big piece of the conversation.
Thank you. So, I have put out many calls. I've only received three back and then some, and then some information from a district. So, Mass Insight actually was the one that was listed that had the most equity audits completed for districts in Massachusetts. So, they completed four equity audits. Four phases. They got the planning stage with the district, with the district team, data collection and analysis, stakeholder engagement, so that's the interviews, surveys, focus groups, and then the analysis and report at the end. So, four phases, they're saying anywhere from seven to 10 months to complete. The cost is $75,000 to $100,000. And in that, the range there they indicated was the amount of stakeholder engagement pieces that we want to really kind of change of that. Their recommendation was that the audit should be in step with onboarding the DEI director or our title, Director of Equity Opportunity. So, wait, the second was systemic educational equity LLC. They have five phases, basically the process of saying the pre-planning with the district, data collection, survey, focus groups, analysis, and report. The only thing difference is they just separated their analysis and the report into two different steps. Eight to 12 months and the cost there is $32,500 to $62,000. On that one, they recommended that the director could either complete the audit on their, by themselves or they could use their consulting firm to either do that in lockstep or separately, however you want to do it. But they've done it always. The third one that has got back to me is the equity consulting. Fourth phases of the process, they work with the district team, they do require a district team. They do the data collection, or district does the data collection, they do the analysis, survey and focus groups, and then a report. So, there, so I did like that the processes seem to be fairly similar. They also said eight to 12 months. Did not give a cost, they said they would have to, you know, talk more in detail, give us a customized cost on that. And they feel the DEI director should be on the team, the district team that they require. Mostly, the indicators on that was that because the DEI director is going to be doing the work. If they're part of that process, they understand it at a deeper level and, and it kind of take ownerships of those action steps. So, they're heavily involved in the reading the report and then, you know, the consult, all these consultants that they could help with lining that up to the goals then based on that. I have called in for about three more. I just have not received information back yet.
I appreciate that because I know that there were, there was some questions about the equity audit. So, to have three experienced firms essentially say the same thing is very helpful, I think, and hopefully answer some questions. Yeah, so, I was gonna say the same thing, that, you know, this is just not something that we've done. And so, to know how experts, this is all that they do, how they recommend proceeding. You know, I'm just glad, thank you for taking the time to reach out to all those places and find out because this is not my expertise. I just want to make sure that we do it right and we just want the person to be successful. So, I appreciate you looking into it. I feel much better.
I was actually gonna say something very similar, but I, I really appreciate the work on this. And again, I just want to be mindful of it. I don't want it to be a haste decision. I know that we've heard from some community members that don't want us to sit on it or drag our feet or what have you. And I, I really, I, A, don't think that that's our intent and B, I really, really want to be super mindful about it. I don't want it to be a haste or I, I just want to be good.
We want the candidate to be successful.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line.
Slowest thing is to know.
Absolutely. Bill Dorfner, I see your, your hand is up.
Yeah, I've just a few questions. You had mentioned the focus group of students, which I think is a great idea. Just so we know, are those students selected for that focus group?
Volunteer. So, during Clipper time, the options are always listed and they can opt in. And so, the students opted in for this discussion.
And what, what grades were represented?
I don't know grades. I'm assuming, well, I can't assume. I think there was a mixture of students from freshman to high school. This is sense I got.
Okay, but high school students are younger than as well?
No, I did this at the high school. This was Clipper time during the high school, yes.
Yeah, I got you. Okay, thank you. Um, you know, obviously, I had some questions last time as well and I shared the sentiments earlier that we, when we ask the questions, it's not that we are necessarily against or opposing anything, but we do want to make sure that we set the person up. Whoever comes into this for success and whether the, you know, it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing of which, which comes first with the audit or the, the position and, or simultaneously. And there were some questions about that. Um, you know what, I'm gonna, I have a question, but I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on that as well. Um, but I believe you said the equity audit would be between 30 and 60,000, was that correct?
So, 3,500, yeah. The lowest amount was 32,000. But that all depends on what package, for that company, between the 32 to 62,000 depends on the package you select. Like, how many, how many of the different levels do you want them to do? How many are you gonna do? You know, that type thing, you know, how many stakeholders you're gonna have involved or not? The other one was 75 to 100,000 and that also depended on the number of stakeholder engagement there. And then I didn't have a cost for the third one. They said they would have to customize that after they talked. More, yeah.
Thank you.
Terry.
Okay, so, I'm gonna send Lori some edits because I misunderstood the directions last time. I thought that we had to do all this in public, so I didn't write anything. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. But I know people think about things. That's why I'm mentioning what I was gonna ask Lori to include. Some of this may not go down. Okay, first, I wanted to say, you mentioned including students in the equity procedures and everything and put in them in here and two, it's, it popped out at me twice, so I want to say that was a good thing to see the students. One was under the responsibility section and the other was in the knowledge and skills section, so that was good. One edit I'd like to make, which is an opinion one, but I think it's, well, I think it's, because I think I'm right, but anyway. In the experience bullet, the last bullet, where we say that bilingual and multilingual, and then we have Portuguese in parentheses preferred. I think if the, this is an equity job description, then equity should mean no language singled out. I, I understand this is a Portuguese community, but I just feel like if a person is multilingual or bilingual, they understand the difficulties of any language usually. That's inherent in having learned other languages. So, I think just being bilingual or multilingual, you have that ability. So, I would say just be equitable and have no language system. That's my opinion. So.
Thank you for that.
So, I, I don't know if you need to vote that or.
I agree with that.
Oh, because it'll come, people will have thought about it and vote next time. Okay. So, I have two more things. In the responsibilities bullet, the fourth bullet down, it says lead programs and activities designed to increase the active achievement of all students. Okay, so, I think again, if you say including students of color, you're signaling, you're signaling out a group. So, I think we should be a groupless, I mean, raceless. So, if we maybe replaced the phrases, students of color, multilingual language, et cetera. If we go back to our opening paragraph where it says, "Understand me, respect me." The example, the EG list of, in the second sentences, everyone see that. There is a good, no naming of any race or culture's description. And it also, I think Kelly said it's good if we can keep the same language and things. So, to me, if we were to replace these things where we list students of color or economic events with this one up at the top, it seems to be, to me, to be more neutral. I mean, it tells us to be aware of these factors, but it doesn't pull out any certain factors.
A clarification if I can. So, taking the same group and putting it down and that's a repeat of the.
Right, so to change, yeah. And then here's an opinion thing too. The last thing about students and including students who are underrepresented in advanced courses. I think we should maybe say, do that in two years because it takes years to build up the course selection and the ability to take advanced courses. I mean, and I know every department in the, in the high school sets out and they write course descriptions and they include things, extra things that kids might know, need to know. And thought maybe guidance counselors could counsel people about, if you want to really do the advanced work, then you need to start from the get-go and get, and build the courses up. Because you can't just in a year decide we're gonna have more people in advanced level courses because it's a process. So, maybe if we could add, if you want to give a time, like two years after we've done some of this background building up, just look for a change. I don't know, I'm looking for help on this one. If people agree with my, my philosophy on that and if they want to put a time frame on that.
I think it's gonna take a long time.
Yeah, I would say to that, but I didn't think any of this had like a timestamp on any of these because I think, hopefully, everybody has a realization that this is going to take a long time to undo and hopefully, there'll be some early wins of the easier pieces that can be dealt with. But, but that's good to point out that there are all the things that lead up to that. But it's just not tackling that thing by itself.
Yeah. Okay, so, we could say, hopefully, data will continually show our advancing in this area or something like that.
Should I, so, I'm hoping, just thinking, notice on Terry, if we, on that, where it said the goal setting, if we put multi-year goals, you know, if I listed it that way. So, it's, it's an indicator that after we have the equity audit, we figure out, we write the goals. The goals are over here, so not just a one year. Does that, you think that would clarify?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, where is that?
Where is the reference to the goal?
Okay.
Oh, there it is, support goal setting, the first one, the first under responsibility, it says support goal setting.
Oh, yeah, right down. So, I knew it was added today. So, that was, yeah.
Thank you. Because everything is gonna be multi-year.
Yeah, so, if I put both a year, there's, and there could be even up maybe in the, I don't know, that's, at least there, at least there.
So, before, do you have any other?
One more, yes. One more opinion one. In the responsibilities, it's, well, it's at the top of the second page. I lost what bullet it was. It's the second sentence on the second page.
Or the stakeholder term.
It's.
The collaborate with.
It's in the collaborate with section.
Okay, yeah.
It would be the fifth bullet. Yeah, I mean, the fifth, never mind, everybody got it.
Collaborate with district and school leaders.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, after the phrase assist with the goals of restored practice, there is a phrase, update discipline procedures and practices. I don't think, from policy work, I know when we discuss discipline, I always feel we need administrators of the schools who deal with discipline to make the recommendations and the thing, and, because they know the age of the kids, they know the severity of things. So, maybe change the word update to just guarantee equity among discipline procedures or something. But I don't believe this person should be involved in setting discipline for various schools because I certainly don't have a, to use.
Have a collaborate with, yeah, school administrators.
So, just, just a point of clarification, this is all under the collaborate with school and district administrators.
We're gonna read that into it. So, it'll say collaborate with district and school leaders to update.
Right.
So, they would not do that on their own independently of all the people.
I guess I missed that, that little two is important.
This might, this section might need to be.
I think it should be bulleted, I think it should be bulleted underneath it. So, it's very clear that this is all with collaboration with district and school.
Yeah. Yeah, I read it like you did.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need to break that out.
Those were my updates, which I'll be sending to Lori.
Thank you. Okay, Leah.
I just wanted to clarify our point. At no time did we think that this director was gonna get involved with discipline as far as, you know, doing the investigation around referrals or talking with, you know, students or bullying out discipline. But the, I will say, I mean, this is something I want to share from the students that I talked to. They felt very strongly though, that, that this person could help listen to the students to find out what the root cause was behind the behavior that was seen and, and then help with that piece of it. And so, I thought that was very insightful for the students. And I just wanted to mention, I was really proud they were looking at it, that they, they absolutely agree that the person shouldn't get involved with giving discipline, but just when there's these incidents, really talk to the students and help understand what's happening and help find, you know, you know, a path forward.
Help advocate for them.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you, Terry, for your opinions and edits.
Okay.
Leah, your hand was up.
Hi, sorry, I'm so awkward here in my car. I've got my computer. I'm not driving, just so you know. So, Lori, I really want to thank you for bringing in the feedback that I, that I gave you around the Student Opportunity Act indicators. And I just, just for the committee, I just wanted to say that the, I just found out about these indicators over the last two weeks and was so happy to find a rubric to measure what school districts need to be doing to really narrow the opportunity gap, particularly for our English language learners, students with disabilities and our low-income students. So, this is actually directly tied to that $2.2 million that we were talking about. So, I look at this as such an opportunity to build in this work around diversity, equity, and belonging and the support that this person, that this director would need in looking at this funding opportunity that we're gonna have. So, I just, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there that, you know, when I'm, when I'm looking at this job description, I'm always looking at how do we support the position? And that comes with funding too. So, I look at the SOA or the Student Opportunity Act as a way to potentially really keep funding going for this work also, because it's so much ties to narrowing that opportunity gap. So, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Great, thank you, Leah. And Bill, your hand is up. Did you have a follow-up question or comment?
Yeah, I do. Looking at, at this, you know, it is extremely important for a student to feel like they belong, that they're welcome in a school in order to learn. It's also important for them to feel safe, regardless of whether that's from bullying, an outside threat, or just feeling safe in their own, their own person. And it was mentioned that, you know, in looking at adding this position, you know, a lot of districts are starting to add this type of thing. A lot of districts for a long time have had and also are adding a Director of Safety and Security for a district and have done security audits on the district as well. And I, I feel like our number one responsibility is to make sure that when those children are entrusted to us and they show up at the school, that our number one responsibility is to return them back to their families. So, I guess a question I have is, if we were to want to, moving forward, have an outside consulting firm come in to do a security audit or a safety audit on our district or potentially add the position of a Director of Safety and Security for our district, fiscally, would adding this position and going through these audits hinder us from moving forward with an additional project such as that?
So, I'm gonna, Patrick, are you there? Can you answer the budget part of that?
No. The answer is no. Yeah, if, if there's a priority that, you know, through the school committee, the superintendent want to, want to focus on and agree upon, we can make things happen over time. It's not, you can't do everything all the time. You do have to reprioritize things over time. But, yeah, that's, it's a creative idea that, that if we, if there's a group that wants to keep talking about it, you'd obviously want to bring the, the police chief into those kind of conversations. But, you know, we can, we can make things happen over time, but you also, you have to prioritize and you have to, you know, you can't do everything at the same time. Interesting idea.
Thank you.
Bill, to follow up on that if I may. So, just a little bit about the structure. So, we have a safety, health and safety committee in every school. And then we have a district-wide committee where some of the members from each school come to the district-wide meeting. At the district level, we have the police department, the fire department. So, we look at, at the safety and so it's really committee-driven. We can certainly look at an audit. As far as the position, I'll just follow what Patrick had said for a while. But I did want to know that it's, it's not that nothing's being done, it's just done by a committee. So, we do look at that. We have not, I could certainly talk to the chief done about an audit and who would normally conduct the audits and such, which could give us good information for the committee work. I just wanted to assure you that there, there is, we are, we are looking at it constantly at the building and the district level.
So, I, I guess that leads to a follow-up question then. If that structure is working for us in the area of health and safety and security of our schools, could that structure also then work for us for this type of position?
Andrea. Bill, I don't know if this answered your question because I think that that would go more to, to Lori, but I just wanted to keep in mind that at least part of this position is coming from the town. This was voted on from town meeting, and that's why we had the split position. So part of that is still in place moving forward. We've expanded it and have separated the two, but that is still driving some of what we're discussing here. Right. And to follow up on that, you know, just a reminder that this was a school committee goal for this year. And that also feeds into why we're looking at having a position and a full-time position for our district. So it's, it's not quite the same comparison. I do hear where you're coming from, but it's, it's it's more involved, right, between the town and also as a goal for not only the school committee, but also for the district.
I was just gonna piggyback on what Andrea said because it's not, it's also, yes, this position was driven by request from town meeting. But even before that, George Bybee was working with the district for years and years and years. So, I mean, this is not, it's not like a new concept to have somebody working at least some of these things going way back. And I, you know, it, as we can see from the job description, this is not, I don't, I just can't imagine a committee trying to take something of this nature. It is, it's gonna be a challenge for one person working full-time to make, you know, headway in all of these categories. But to ask staff, because also acknowledging that committees are made up of people who are already working in the district, who already have a full plate, as we know. So to ask them to take on something like that just seems, not only would I don't imagine it would be as successful, but I, I wouldn't want to ask them to take on something that big.
So I will just follow up with that. Both in the educator group that I met with and the student group, both recognized that this was going to be a very large job. And it was interesting, the students even said, I think you're gonna need two or three people. It's a big job. But both groups suggested that we do have school committees, that these equity committees at the school and then the district-wide that this person could lead, to make sure there's always feedback and then to make sure that we have people in each school to, you know, that can help carry out. So I, I thought it was interesting that both groups had had that suggestion. But definitely it was in addition to not in place, but on the same lines that you were thinking, some of the committee work, it was mentioned.
Leah, is your, Bill, I don't want to cut you off. Are you all set? Did you want to add anything else?
I'm good. Thank you.
Leah, your hand is still.
Yeah. So actually, Lori, I, that's exactly what I was gonna talk about because I was thinking about, you know, how Bill was saying, is this, is it possible to have that same setup? But it does look like we're building that into this job description of facilitating these committees or groups within the schools to really support this movement. So I, I really appreciated that part of this job description because I do think, you know, it really does need to be, it can't be this one person. It really needs to be everyone invested in this. And how do you do that? You get stakeholders involved and you get them really owning all of this movement. So, so thank you for that. I just wanted to bring up one other thing that I meant to bring up before. And it was about that bullet that Terry was talking about with the underrepresented in advanced courses. And I just think that maybe we should be a little bit broader here with, we're really looking at students who are underserved in all capacities in our school. So I, I think that it should be students, you know, who are underserved within our school system. Because it's not just, it's just, it's not just the advanced courses, it's other areas where there are inequities and lacks, lack of opportunities for students or gaps in opportunities for students. So I just wanted to point that out.
Any other comments or questions? So at our last meeting, you know, I was really torn about the direction of, you know, do we do this in, you know, sequentially or the equity audit and the filling this position, or do we do it in parallel? And looking at this now and the layout of the responsibilities, I feel like there are enough pieces to be pulled from here. And like we were talking about, if this is a multi-year type of work, so there would be enough work to be getting started as well as the participation in the equity audit. Like you said, the people you spoke to said was important so that they understand what they've heard along the way. So I do think that these two things could happen at the same time and that that it wouldn't need to be a wait for it, but and still be thorough enough, right? You don't want to just have someone there floundering and not knowing what they're supposed to do. So there are very tangible things that we already know. And then there's the deeper meatier things that are in some of those first bullets, right, where you're, you're digging into root causes and making new plans.
Any other comments? Be back. Okay, so if anyone who has edits to the actual job description, if you can email those to Lori by Friday, I think that'd be very helpful. And then in terms of the timeline, and then Deb, when I will let you speak, I see your hand is up. In terms of timeline for this school committee, we are gonna vote on this position on the 26th, just to make sure that the momentum is, is staying. And so Deb, I will. Mine, can you promote Deb, but W, you can briefly speak if you, there you are, you're promoted. Hi, Deb.
Thank you. Oh, me. I guess you, you just see my picture, right? You can't actually see me. Thank you for giving me just a few seconds. I, I really appreciate that you're going through this process. And, and I especially appreciate that Lori had looked at the couple of, looked into a couple of places that do the equity audit and how they, how they suggested kind of integrating a, a director into that. I, I did want to make two comments about the conversation tonight. One was in regards to the Portuguese preferred. I, I feel like it's really important to keep that in there. I understand the committee members' point about understanding if you, if you've had to learn one language, you kind of understand how to the, the experience of learning a language. But I think this is also so much about culture, not just language and understanding the culture of those who speak Portuguese, whether they're Brazilian or from Portugal. So I would really like to see that in there. The other comment that I wanted to make, again, I, I understand the committee members intent in terms of wanting to be, stay neutral about things. But, you know, part of making things equitable is, is about not being neutral. It's about really looking at who has been underserved and and paying attention to those groups that have been underserved, which really, you know, include people of color and immigrants and others who fall into minority or underrepresented populations. So I just wanted, you know, I, I felt like that being on the job description, though it should be obvious, it was also, that's it. Thank you for giving it a time.
Great, thank you, Deb. Okay. So yes, so circling back again, we will vote on this job description at our next meeting. Update by the superintendent.
So I'm not playing a lot because I knew this was a very short meeting, but I would like to say that next Wednesday, there is a art show at Morse Pond from five to seven. And just a reminder of the stories, the stellar stories at Lawrence on next Thursday evening. Two of the events that were just coming up. So wanted to mention those. I know I'd already said something about the stories, but just as a reminder.
Okay, that's it. Next up on our agenda is routine business to approve the minutes of March 22nd, 2022. Lots of chews in that. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from March 22nd?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from March 22nd.
And is there a second?
Second.
And Kelly's second. So again, are there any edits to the minutes? Seeing none, it will be a roll call vote. We will begin with Bill Dorfner.
Bill Dorfner, yes.
Leah.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Eric, would yours? Yes. Welch, yes. Melissa Keith, yes. Lisa Hart, yes. Sandra, yes.
And Natalie Canalopoulos, also, yes.
Committee member reports.
I just have one. Melissa kindly volunteered to help set the, you did. I might just be throwing it out there to get you to vote. Yeah, so we're gonna be continuing the tradition of registering seniors to vote next week. I don't know, I've lost track.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah.
During a couple of time of high school and, yeah, but excited to be actually able to go and get back to it.
Thank you for doing that. Terry.
That is us getting into the building, too.
It is.
So one thing that we heard clamored for at those listening sessions. So here we go.
Here we go.
Two people going into the buildings.
Yeah. Andrea.
Can I use your question like Kelly? So you said that's during a couple of time.
Yeah.
Does that mean the students have to choose from the?
No, normally, yes, but this one is during a senior meeting. Instead of opening it up to the whole school because it's really just seniors who normally be old enough to vote. So they'll just be during their regular senior class meeting, which is on. They'll all be there and Mr. Mack told them to bring the driver's license and their phone. So we're gonna actually register them all. They're gonna do it. Leah, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, so this is kind of a funny committee member report, but I, my, my daughter took me onto the track over the weekend and I just wanted to say how much I enjoy our track. I had a very hard workout, thanks to Carmody Palmer, but I really like the resurfacing. It's just a, it's looking really good over there. And I got to try the, the long jump and things. So I just wanted to, again, really thank the Falmouth Road Race for that and all the work. And, and it just happened that I had left school committee for a year when that got done. So I'm back and I just wanted to, to thank everyone now because it was, it was truly enjoyable and I'm looking for forward to weekends on the track with my daughter. So thank you.
Leah, thank you for sharing that. And Andrea.
That's a perfect segue about track. So from the Falmouth NIPS committee, they are hosting on Saturday the elementary school track meet. So that is now back in person. It's gonna be outdoors, but we're very excited and happy to have that event back, too.
And that is this Saturday, the ninth, yes.
Okay.
Is that what it's? Did I steal something?
No. It was a great idea. No, I forgot. I forgot it. And I was like, oh, and I do love that. I love that. That's a great idea. So thank you for, you know, being in our memory.
And two quick reminders. First, that we, the school committee, will be at the administration building at our next meeting on the 26th after two years. And the public is welcome to join us in person for those meetings. And then also I sent out an email last week that the observations for superintendent's evaluations are now due on April 28th, and we have options of events to, to witness Lori in action. So those are due on the 28th. So any requests for information? Oh, Bill, sorry, Bill. Sorry about that.
It's okay. I just also had a, a comment in, in reference to our committee and the community. Was at the post office about a week or so ago and had someone walk up to me and ask me if I lived in Falmouth. And I said, yes, I did. And then asked me if I would sign their petition to get on the ballot for school committee. And we said, well, that's, that's funny because I'm actually on. And we talked for a while what it was like to be on this committee and, and the, the commitment it takes and, 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 you know, the rewards of it and so forth. And it was a wonderful conversation. I noticed the article that we have, I believe, six people on the ballot this coming, it's coming up. And it's just exciting to see that people are in, interested in being involved in the process. It'll, it'll be interesting to see, you know, how all that plays out, but I'm just excited to see that there are, are people interested in the process. And and I just wanted to throw that out there that I'm, I'm glad people are being involved.
Yeah, that was great. I appreciate that. Thank you, Bill. Request for information. There a motion to adjourn? Second, and it is a roll call vote. So Bill Dorfner.
Dorfner, yes.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Terry Maduris, yes.
Welch, yes. Melissa Keith, yes. Lisa Hart, yes. Sandra, yes. Natalie Canalopoulos, also, yes. And we are adjourned. And thank you, school committee members, who are now going to town meeting. Thank you. Have a great day.